Good evening. We have a packed house tonight, so welcome everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the regular city council meeting for the city of Temple City. And to start things off, may we have a row call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu is absent. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Yu for cause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no objections, Councilmember Yu is excused for cause. Next, we have our invocation, and we have the pleasure of having Pastor Kelty provide the invocation for tonight. Please all rise for the invocation, and please remain standing afterwards for the pledge.
Oh divine Creator, we thank you that we're able to meet together this evening to conduct the business of the city of Temple City. We do so in order that we might provide direction to this community, so that it might become an even better community than it already is. We know that this will not be an easy task, but one considers all the problems and difficulties that we face. So we recognize that it's not something we can do alone, but need your divine help and support and guidance. It's for this reason we offer this prayer to you this evening. May we, Lord, see the world around us and the community as you would have us to become with your divine creations and your caregivers. Therefore, let this be our prayer to you this evening, that through what we do here tonight, tomorrow, and the days to follow, we indeed may follow your direction, and we might indeed leave this a community a better community than we have founded. Yes, we do ask and pray in all humility. Amen.
Tonight, we have Cub Scout Troop 169 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. There are currently 20 scouts in the pack, 15 Tigers, second graders, and five Weblos, fifth graders. They meet every first, third, and fourth Wednesday of each month at the Elks Lodge in San Gabriel. They are one of the first family packs to operate in the San Gabriel Valley. And the family pack is a Cub Scout pack which allows both boys and girls. So Cub Scout Troop 169, please lead us in the pledge.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you, Cub Scout Troop 169. Tonight, we also have several very special ceremonial presentations. Hence why we have such a packed house. First off, we have our Temple City Youth Committee Appointment Confirmation. The city received 19 applications to fill just four seats on the youth committee this year. Our youth committee was established in 2010 to give voice to the concerns and needs of youth in Temple City and to serve as a link to the city council. Past youth committee objectives that align with the city's strategic goals include water conservation, installation and promotion of the Little Free Libraries, which there are at least nine of us, nine of them, in our community; promotion of city history and the city's historical museum; discussion and exploration of economic development and downtown revitalization; community safety and emergency preparedness; hosting of the youth community emergency response training program, which we call CERT. They also learned about city hall services and local government, recycling and sustainability. They also participated in Metro's next-gen bus study. They promoted the 2020 census count, hosted and recorded a mental wellness discussion with our then-state senator Susan Rubio, and hosted pop-up discussions with their peers, including traffic safety around Temple City High School, leadership, legislation, and elections. That's a lot of things that they've covered since the inception of the youth committee. This year, the committee will focus on safety and emergency preparedness, and they will also be promoting learning about our local government. The youth committee meets once a month on the fourth Thursday of each month at 5:30 p.m. right here in our council chambers, and they will convene for their first monthly meeting on October 26. So before we affirm their appointments, and we have certificates that we would like to, as a council, present to each of these members, I would like to see if a council would have any comments. And I know definitely Mayor Protem would like to say a few words, so if maybe you can kick us off.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Mann. Well, I probably say this all every year, but I think the numbers play it out, and that is, of all our commissions and organizations, I think to get a spot on the youth committee is one of the most difficult things that we have in the city. So the 10 young men and women we see today went through quite a process, and we're very proud of them. And as you can see from past years, they have big shoes to fill, but we know they'll be able to do it. This is a great group of young men and women we have this year, and I'm looking forward to this coming year and the things that they will accomplish in their own right. We're a little top-heavy this year in seniors. Peggy, I think six we have. So we have six seniors this year, which is a little unusual. We try to space it out as, you know, with an equal number, but that means next year, if anyone's interested, those of you in the audience, if you're high school age, if you're interested in becoming a part of our youth committee, probably next year is a good year to apply, because we're going to have six openings. And so, you know, they're going to do a great job, and I'm sure at the end of the year, we'll sit back here and we'll hear what they've accomplished and be very proud of them, as we always are. So good luck, and thank you guys for coming tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other council comments? Councilmember Viscara?
I'm just glad to see him here, and I'm glad to see what you've done and what that program has done over the years. You guys are commendable. And Mayor Protem has done a heck of a leadership job with this group, so congratulations to Yu and to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. And we would be remiss, though, in saying that the real push behind all this, of course, is our clerk Peggy Quo and, of course, Jillian Nunez, who unfortunately has gone on to another job, but we miss her, and they do a great job with the youth committee and on a day-to-day basis, and I know they'll continue doing it. Thank you. Thank you to them.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Just like to thank you for stepping up and taking the challenge of, first of all, filling out an application, going through the interview process, and then, once you're chosen, being part of a team effort, because you all know that whatever you accomplish, you do together, just as we do as city council. No one comes to outshine another, but just to work together as a team for the betterment of the city. And I think these leadership skills that you learn now, especially to the seniors who will be leaving to go off to school or whatever you choose to do, will definitely take these leadership skills with you. And I'm very proud of all of you, and I know Jillian isn't here anymore, Peggy, and I have a lot of free time. So if you want some help with the youth committee until Jillian's shoes are filled, I'm happy to help you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And, yeah, I just want to also say that, you know, in looking at the long list of accomplishments that the youth committee has done since 2010, we're incredibly proud. And I also want to say that in our capacity as city council members, we do meet and talk to a lot of our colleagues in other cities and communities, not just in Southern California, but in other parts of California and sometimes other parts of the nation. And whenever I tell them about the youth committee and what they are able to accomplish, everyone's blown away. You know, they might, other agencies might have a youth committee, but they don't do nearly as much as what our youth committee does. So I don't want to, you know, scare you with that. It's more of like words of encouragement that you are empowered truly in this capacity. And we always like talking about our commissioners as extensions of the voice of city council. We would like you to think of yourselves as an extension of us as well. So please keep that in mind as you blaze forward this coming year. And so with that, I'd like to ask all of city council to join me in presenting certificates of appointment to each member. So first, first appointment is for Amir King. And please, stay, we're going to get a picture with all of you. Next is Krista Wong. Sarah Quo. Lucas Co. De Paula. Kevin Zhang. And Priscilla Sito. All right. Tonight, we have invited the Temple City American Softball Association so that we, as a city, can recognize the 12U team for winning the 2023 district championship. It is a combination of hard work from players and coaches, plus the behind-the-scenes support from the team mom and team manager that led the team to its victories. With us tonight are the players Coach Kerry Schwartz, Coach Sophia Tran. Yes, please, applause. Team mom Marcela Zorochak. And team manager and coach Michael Johnson. And at this time, I'd actually like to invite the coach and anyone else who'd like to maybe speak about the journey for the team. Any volunteers?
Who's going to do that?
Yes, please.
She's in Hawaii right now.
Oh, okay.
I've been doing this a long time, and I think we came here six years ago.
I remember.
Right. And there's Berlin right there. We're so fortunate that we have these girls, and my special word to my parents is called loyalty, because if we didn't have them, we wouldn't have these girls. And we went a long way, and we're still playing. And to be out there and giving up our time, it's priceless. And then Sophia here is in Hawaii, like I said, and then we got Kerry here, all the way from West Virginia from the cornfields, came all the way over here to assist. And I couldn't be more happier for us three. They did really well, went a long way. So I want to say thank you.
Great.
Thank you. I would just say that I, this whole train was moving long before I got here. I've only been here for a year, so I kind of jumped on as it was already moving. But Mike puts in so much time and so much energy to not only this team, but to every team in the league, really, and keeps the field going and keeps, makes sure everything is running and looks good. And, you know, I'm sure his wife would probably like to see him at home more often, but he's at the field all the time, making it look perfect. But none of that would happen if he wasn't there. So I think we should all appreciate that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So Mayor Protem, would you like to say a few words?
Well, you know, at the risk of stating the obvious, we have some pretty neat youth in our community, don't we? From the scouts to our youth committee, to our softball program. You know, I think, speaking for all of us up here, we, it does our heart good to see this type of thing, because, you know, we live in a difficult society and a difficult world today, I think. And to see the accomplishments of the youth of our community, it makes us feel good that we will continue on, and the strength that we have now will continue on through your work as the youth of our community. So I'm very proud and honored to be part of the community that has such a great class of young men and women. And, you know, it just makes you feel good that, you know, we're doing the right thing. Parents, teachers, you know, anyone that is around the youth is, I think, doing a great job, at least here in Temple City. And, you know, keep up the good work, because I think it's going to pay off in the long run. There's no question about that. So thank you all for coming tonight. Great turnout. Thank you so much. And I always say this, and, you know, we had the Little League team here last meeting. And, you know, we all know, and this goes for all the youth that are here tonight, you guys have to give a big shout-out to your parents and those who support you, your older brothers and your sisters, because they're doing something right as well, and we can see that in what you do. And so I hope you appreciate that, and, you know, give your parents a big hug tonight and thank them, because, you know, they're doing a good job as well. So, good job, all of you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, would you like to say something?
Just congratulations for a successful year, and we all know it takes a village. It can't just be one parent, two parents, it's everybody, coaches. Tom, how long have you been involved with youth sports?
A long time.
A very long time. So, I mean, it just really does take a village to just support one another and support the team. So all the hard effort, I think when you're young, you don't realize how much effort your parents put into getting you to the places you need to go on time and all the activities that you want to be in and do. So I think Tom's right. Give your parents a big hug this evening, and thanks again to the adults who help supervise these kids and get them to where they need to be. So thank you.
Councilmember Viscara?
It's hard to add to that, but as we started this, I was thinking, the parents here are doing something right. Congratulations to them. And, excuse me, and to you as well. Thank you for bringing honor to the city and to yourselves.
You know, I have a real quick question.
Sure.
How long has ASA been at Live Oak Park now?
2010.
When did it start? 2010, okay. Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah.
And I'm glad to see that you are doing well.
Yeah.
Okay, it's a good program. It's a great program. And I can tell by the young women who are here today, they are having a good time, and, you know, we do appreciate you representing the city of Temple City. And, you know, it's, to me, as Councilmember Sternquist said, I've been involved in youth sports for a long time, and my boys were very young. I still think one of the best places to kind of hang out is Live Oak Park on a summer evening, and when the wind starts up and it's nice and cool, and it's just a great atmosphere. You've got the baseball field going, you've got the softball field going.
And the snack bar.
Snack bar going.
Don't forget the snack bar.
Yeah. I still have parents who have not had a kid in any of these programs still come to the snack bar just to get the food. Now, I don't know, that might be a little much, but there's something about snack bar food at the park, right?
At the game.
At the game, you know, just like going to Dodge again, you've got to have a hot dog, right? Even if you don't eat hot dogs. But, no, it's a great, great atmosphere. You guys do a great job, and thank you for also taking care of the field. I mean, I know that a lot of people don't realize that the city really doesn't take care of the actual fields. That's left up to the organizations. I mean, we'll cut the grass and things like that, and, of course, take care of the maintenance thing, but you guys do a great job with the fields. Thank you for keeping them in great shape as well. So, good job.
Yeah, and I echo all the sentiments that everyone has said. Earlier, Mayor Protem Chavez and I were actually speaking with the Cub Scouts, and one of the questions they asked us was, what's our favorite part about serving on city council? And we both unanimously agreed that it was meeting the people, you know. And over the years, we've had the privilege of seeing many different youth sports teams that have various accolades and achievements and victories, and we've had the pleasure of having them here at our city council meeting and congratulating them. And the one thing that is common with all the teams is that everything that you're going through truly builds character. And it's a reflection of not just yourselves, but your coaches, your parents, and really, like Councilmember Viscara says, you make us proud that you're a part of that Temple City community, and that we're very proud to say, we can say with great pride that, look at what, look at what they've accomplished, right? So thank you for coming here tonight, and as part of this, we do have certificates of recognition that we like to present to all the players, and I'd like to ask council to present them with me. So when we call your name, if you could please come up, and we'd like to get a picture with everyone. First, we have Zoe Andrade. Natalia Cortez. Haley Diaz. Berlin Johnson. Emma King. Dixie Montana. Yaslin Nunez. Adrian Sapien. Olivia Tran. Mila Westervelt. Oh, sorry. And, of course, we also have certificates for the people who make it possible. First, Kerry Schwartz. I know Sophia Tran is in Hawaii, but we have one for her, too. Marcela Zorochak. And Coach Michael Johnson. At this time, you can feel free to leave the meeting if you need to get home. We'll be proceeding with the rest of tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Remember, when you first started the program, you were here and talking to us when we were on Parks and Rec?
So we made it. Next year, we'll have four teams fall in town.
Wow.
Good. Good luck.
Actually, I'm going to take one item out of order, because I know, I'm going to actually jump ahead to public comment, just because I know Ben Tran, you would like to speak on the, regarding the Temple City American Softball Association. Perhaps I'd like to give you a chance to do that before we come back to our other matter.
Thank you so much.
Yes, please, please come up.
Thank you so much again. Again, my name is Ben Tran, one of the parents for two of the people you saw tonight, my daughter Sophia, who couldn't be here, she's actually at the University of Hawaii, not just in Hawaii, and my youngest Olivia, as well as another daughter, older daughter, who did play at Temple City High School softball as well. And I wanted to discuss and hopefully make improvements to our experiences and also to the league. And the two requests that, two items I wanted to bring up is, one, we are currently in our fall ball season. This is our second year playing fall ball. Last year was the first time I found out that Temple City does not, in fact, have a home field during the fall. We do share this field with AYSO, with the soccer league. In my opinion, there is plenty of room so that we can actually share the entire park space, but we are quite limited to just the dirt field, and our home games are actually in Laverne. Information that I wasn't aware of when I signed up. You know, if we could, we would take a hard look at not playing feedback last year, and I was hopeful that we would have some changes, but this year, it got a little bit worse, because we have even less field, for some reason, this field this year. And so, I'm hoping we can take a look at that. Again, you know, just, we're actually going to be out of rec league age anyway, but I wanted to still have this comments, because I do want to see the league improve, and I do want the experiences to improve. Our softball is getting very popular, as you can imagine, you know, our high school recently won CIFs. Our program has been winning districts. We actually won high school states with Takasa, the first state title. Sophia was on that team, and, you know, really excited about that. So, I just, I do want to see the league constantly improve. I do want our girls, our families to have as best experience as possible with this. And the second thing I'd like to, for us to consider, is hosting more tournaments. We spend a lot of time and money going to all of the other San Gabriel Valley tournaments. And it just seems like this is something that we should be more supportive of, and allowing leagues to rent the space on Saturdays and Sundays. And, you know, from what I hear, it's just Sundays have just always been something we don't do, but again, we are spending a lot of time and money at other leagues on weekends, including our neighbors that are here, Sierra Madre, Pasadena. We played at all these tournaments, they're all rec leagues, and I think it provides a really valuable experience for the city, the league, and it also helps reduce fees, too. Takasa is not cheap. It is one of the more expensive leagues, and, you know, I'm really disappointed that the amount of money we spend to have a diminished experience, especially in the fall. And again, I'm hoping that improves, and it's really one of the reasons why I wanted to, and thank you for the ability to make these comments, so that we can hopefully work with Parks and Rec in a really meaningful way to, and of course, with approval from the City Council, to try and really, again, improve the experiences for our team and our league. And I think it's possible, I do think there's plenty of field available for both teams. We do share the field with AYSO in the spring. It's not like we carve up the fields and, you know, tell them they get a little, one section of it only, so I think we can be more efficient with it. I just hope that we can get some support in this endeavor.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments.
Have you, have you reached out to the school district at all, regarding the use of their fields?
I was actually with the school district when we had no field also. We can rent their space. Actually, we've also reached out to Rosemead for park rental as well, and I was going to check with Duarte next, because they have a really nice field and not as many. Their softball league isn't as busy, so they do have some capacity. But I know, I know the high schools are interested, because the high school recently started hosting weekend tournaments. It's been actually quite successful, I volunteered at several of these tournaments, so we know that they have the fees. Again, I didn't reach out at the beginning of the season, because I didn't know we would have this issue this fall.
Do most of the girls from your program go to Temple City High School eventually? Or, no, or they don't?
It varies. So, for example, my daughters are at Temple City High School. I would say probably half of our, again, just personal experience, the league would have more information, I would say probably half of our team are in the community.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for letting us know.
Great, thank you again.
Appreciate it. And since we're on public comments, I might as well ask if there's anyone else who would like to make a public comment to the City Council at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will return to our final presentation. Tonight, we have an update from the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. Martin Madrano, who is the Community Relations Manager. I see you are already ready, ready to go, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I think I have a PowerPoint. There it is. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager Cook. We thank you for giving us the time to be with you this evening. Temple City is one of the COGS valued members, and we appreciate your partnership in some of the COGS transportation programs, as well as our Planning Directors Working Group. Specifically, our team has enjoyed working with the city staff, like Director of Community Development Scott Reimer, so just wanted to be sure to give that shout out. So, with that, it's my pleasure to give you an update on what we've done this year, and what we're looking forward to doing in the future. So, as many of you on the dais are aware, you know, COG is a regional government planning agency. We operate as a joint powers authority with a membership of 31 incorporated cities, including unincorporated communities in LA County Supervisory, Supervisory, Supervisorial Districts, that was a tongueful, one and five. And there's also three water districts that are, that are members of the Council of Governments, the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, Three Valleys Municipal Water District, and the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. The COG is the largest and most diverse subregional council in Los Angeles County, and it covers over 374 square miles, representing over 2 million residents. Our agency's core aim is to maximize resources available to the communities efficiently, continuously seek sustainable solutions for shared challenges, and strongly advocate for regional and member interests. These manifest in what we do, and you see that they're up here on the slide, specifically meeting the common needs of our partners, providing local solutions and answers, improving the quality of life for folks and residents of the San Gabriel Valley, and putting our neighbors first. So, meeting common needs. The COG does this through a variety of programs, such as our Affordable Housing Incubator Program, the Upper Los Angeles Watershed Management Program, Safe Clean Water Program, the Vehicle Miles Travel Program, and the Food Recovery Program, which Temple City actually participates in. So, with, specifically for inspection services and technical assistance to ensure compliance under SB 1383. As you know, SB 1383 inspections are required for edible food generators, so like grocery stores, restaurants, wholesale vendors, and food recovery organizations, like food banks and food factories, to keep up to date on reporting and record-keeping requirements. So, we're so happy to be a partner of yours on this, and just another example of how the COG meets common needs in the San Gabriel Valley. The COG has had a lot of success in advocating for regional solutions to some of the San Gabriel Valley's most pressing challenges in the past. So, as you'll see here in this slide, there's some check presentations, and later on, there'll be more information about just how successful we've been in receiving state and federal funds that support local solutions throughout the San Gabriel Valley. So, quality of life, again, one of the tenants laid out at the second slide. And this dovetails into it. Following the core tenant, that core tenant, the COG is committed to uplifting quality of life throughout the San Gabriel Valley, and this manifests itself by finding common sense solutions to regional problems. So, we work with member cities, state and local elected officials, to provide resources and programs to address these regional needs. So, most recently, I think the largest of one is the 5760 Confluence Project. Although maybe Temple City isn't as close to the 5760 interchange, it's a crucial intersection that links San Bernardino, Los Angeles, and Orange Counties. The two-mile-long artery passes through the cities of Diamond Bar and Industry, and has a daily traffic volume of approximately 350,000 vehicles. It's listed as the worst bottleneck in the state of California, and one of the worst bottlenecks in the country. And so, again, a way we're hoping to improve quality of life for folks is by overseeing stuff like infrastructure, as well as grade separations, as part of our Alameda Corridor East project. So, once, like, once the 5760 freeway is done, the hope is, whether it's the move of goods, commerce, will improve for not just the San Gabriel Valley, but really the state and the nation.
Martin, can I, can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely, sir.
Regarding grade separation, I know there's been a number of them that have been undertaken over the last 10 or so years. Is the COG in the process of looking at other future grade separation type projects, or is that, has that train passed?
I...
Forgive the pun.
I appreciate the pun. That's a great question. We are actively looking at doing more of that, the grade separations in the future. It's just in kind of the incubator phase for us as of now. So, of those ACE projects, there was like 19 total, back when it was initially established in like the late 90s, early 2000s.
Yeah.
We just wrapped up, I think it's our 16th, which is the Fairway Drive on the City of Industry, and we still have a few more to finish, the last three. So, yeah, we're looking ahead on that. We're just, right now, brainstorming ways to properly get the resources to do them.
Okay, yeah, because we, we have one at-grade crossing in the city.
Okay, terrific. Yeah, that's, um, so I'll bear that in mind.
Technically, it's two. Lower Azusa.
Lower Azusa.
Yeah. Although, I think there's, maybe Brian might know, but I think that's right at the boundary of Temple City and Rosemead.
Got it, yeah. No, it's a good question, and something we plan on rolling out, and really gauging our partners' interest in, if that's something they see, like, they'd like to see continued. So, more information on that to come.
That was recently discussed at the last COG meeting recently, about the partnership that the COG can have as project managers also.
Right.
So, definitely something that willing to, I can, or if you would reach out to the COG, they will, you know, have a discussion with you at least about what...
Sure, sure.
We would want there.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's, that's a great, great idea, thank you, Councilmember Sternquist. Yeah, because I understand the Alameda Corridor East Authority is, is the vehicle in which the COG manages these types of projects.
Yes, that's correct, yeah, yeah. Good question.
Thank you.
What's the timeline on that 5760 project?
2028.
To start?
To end. Oh, we broke ground in June of this past year, yeah.
I haven't been that way in a long time, but you're right, it is a pain to get through there.
It's a, I mean, I grew up, I grew, so I grew up in...
It wasn't always like that, because when it was first, the 57 freeway first went in there, was one of the better freeways to travel on.
Sure.
Now, it's one of the worst.
It's the, literally the worst in the state.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's a, we're hoping to improve it. It's actually been going on for a while, because there's a golf course nearby, so they had to do all of that, that foundation work, foundational work first, and now we're actually getting into the freeway infrastructure portion of it. So, we broke ground in June, we're making a lot of noise for the neighbors that are there, but it's going well.
When are they gonna open the golf course?
Soon.
Soon, soon, very soon.
That's a question you would ask.
That is, that's a good question, and I can tell you soon.
You know what that did? It, it put almost 20,000 golfers out into all the other golf courses in the San Gabriel Valley, making them too crowded.
You know, it's funny, because I, like, our office in Monrovia, I just, one day was randomly walking up in the elevator, and I must have been holding a sign or something, but a man who I must work in the office building stopped me and asked me, he's like, when are you guys finished with that, my golf course? So, I was like, soon. So, you're right, it's a lot of people really...
We all talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's almost on the turf, if you happen to drive by, turf's laid down and it's looking good. There's just a specification about how deep the grass needs to grow. With the rain that happened this year, it kind of pushed back the timeline and enabled to lay that grass, so we were hoping that it was gonna be done a little sooner, but with the rain, it pushed back the lane down of the sod, so we're almost there.
So, you're looking at when?
It's a complicated answer to that.
Soon.
Soon. I'm cautiously optimistic that it'll be before Thanksgiving, but, you know.
Oh, that's a...
Yeah, yeah, cautiously optimistic, again.
You're a good person.
Yeah, well, thank you guys for those questions. And I kind of lost where I was at, but it's okay.
Neighbors first.
Go to the next slide, then, it's easy.
Next slide. Oh, no, no, I know where I'm at, I'm sorry. So, neighbors first. So, you know, as an employee of the COG, some of the most inspiring work, oh, feel-good work that we get to do is what's on this slide here, specifically when it comes to homelessness and, and our tiny homes programs. So, the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust has, provides funding and technical assistance to cities and participating members who are looking to address affordable housing, and of course, the issue of homelessness. So, they've developed three tiny home shelters that are now open, providing over 105 beds of interim housing with local preference for residents of those host cities. Each site provides onsite supportive services for residents, including case management, 24-hour-seven staffing, site security, folks get three meals a day, and connections to any of the other services, such as transportation, healthcare, even job training in some instances. So, the three sites that we oversee are Esperanza Villa in Baldwin Park, tiny home sites. And as of June 30th, 24 clients are now permanently housed that were once homeless, which is great. Our Tiny Home Village in Montebello, which is Operation Stay Safe, as of June 30th, has had 21 clients permanently housed, which is, you know, 21 less folks off the streets. And then, Serenity Homes in Baldwin Park, which just opened actually a year ago, almost to the day, has officially had three families become permanently housed, and that facility is specifically tailored to families. So, the Housing Trust is about four years old, so we're really enthusiastic about the work they've done, and I'm just happy to be a part of it and get to see kind of some of the good work they do.
How long do they generally stay in those transition homes?
I don't have that number exactly off the top of my head.
Months, or?
It's, uh, the, so, the goal is 90 days?
Oh, 90 days.
Yeah, but...
So, so they go in there, the goal is to get them in there as a transition to finding permanent housing?
That's correct.
Okay.
The hope is to get all of it.
And is the, are these places pretty much always full then? There's somebody always in those?
So far, yes.
Okay.
So far, yeah, so far, that's been the case. But they're, you know, they're all pretty new, I think, I think the first one that opened in Baldwin Park was in like October of 2021, I believe. So, so we're really enthusiastic and encouraged by those, those outcomes. So, as I was saying earlier on, one of the things we've been successful at is advocating for the region, for federal, state, and county funding, and so, last year, we received $74 million for our projects and programs, which is all money going back to the San Gabriel Valley in various forms. Our accomplishments for last year, and you can see some of them do talk about homelessness, regional homeless program, the city pilot programs, we serviced over 2,800 people, we relaunched a, our GoSGV Bike Share Program, which, I don't know if anyone here rides electric bikes, but it's a bike share program for electric bikes, where, if you've ever looked at the price of those things, they're quite expensive. Folks can rent them for, gosh, I don't have the price off the top of my head, for a reasonable price, though. And ultimately, actually, what it's led into is people end up buying these bikes permanently, so, and use them as an alternate mode of transportation. So, that's been an exciting one. We've had a hun, we've developed 105 units of interim tiny home sites, broke ground on the 5760, finished Fairway as well, that was in July. And then, our Workforce Development Program, and this wraps into our tiny homes as well, is for youth who are kind of on the margins. We give them training, provide them career development, and so, we just had a group of kids graduate in June with technical skills to move on and, and become self-sufficient.
And when you say kids, are these are, have to be 18?
Yeah, they're like teenagers.
18 to 22, something like that?
They're like 17, 16, to about like 20.
Okay.
I don't know if that counts as kids, maybe that's just me getting older.
It's a kid to us, that's for sure.
And looking ahead, so, begin construction... regional homeless program, the city pilot programs, we serviced over 2,800 people. We relaunched our GoSGV bike share program, which, I don't know if anyone here rides electric bikes, but it's a bike share program for electric bikes where, if you've ever looked at the price of those things, they're quite expensive. Folks can rent them for, gosh, I don't have the price off the top of my head, for a reasonable price, though. And ultimately, actually, what it's led into is people end up buying these bikes permanently, so, and use them as an alternate mode of transportation. So, that's been an exciting one. We've developed 105 units of interim tiny home sites, broke ground on the 57-60, finished fairway as well, that was in July. And then our workforce development program, and this wraps into our tiny homes as well, is for youth who are kind of on the margins. We give them training, provide them career development. And so, we just had a group of kids graduate in June with technical skills to move on and become self-sufficient.
And when you say kids, so these are, have to be 18?
Yeah, they're like teenagers.
18 to 22, something like that?
They're like 17, 16, to about like 20.
Okay.
I don't know if that counts as kids, maybe that's just me getting older.
It's a kid to us, that's for sure.
And looking ahead. So, begin construction on Turnbull Canyon, that's a part of the ACE program. That's a grade separation project, as well as the Montebello Corridor grade separation project. The Montebello grade separation project is closer to breaking ground than Turnbull is right now, so we're really enthusiastic about that. We're going to complete the San Gabriel Valley Transit Feasibility Study, which is looking at bus routes throughout the SGV, and the establishment of three regional food recovery hubs to reduce food insecurity in the region.
Where is the Montebello Corridor grade separation located?
Vale, and I'm going to miss the cross street, I'm sorry. I can get back to you about that.
Yeah, so, I'm a little familiar with Montebello, but I was wondering, is it east-west side of Montebello?
It's near the dairy, Bushboro. Do you know where the dairy's at in Montebello?
Uh-huh.
It's near, it's, it-
Okay.
It's near there, yeah. Again, looking ahead, 60 energy reviews to be provided as part of our energy efficient program. We have a mobile crisis program where we send out alternative response officers to calls where normally a police officer would show up. So, if there's, you know, a homeless individual who's having a mental health crisis, we send out mental health providers to address the situation. Instead of an officer, provide them with services and kind of get them on a path to hopefully have them better take care of themselves. We have a few, it's a pilot right now, one of the cities that we work with is South Pasadena, and this was a program that received funding from Anthony Portantino last year, as well as Judy Chu. And then, of course, most importantly, from what I've learned, the golf course is going to be completed this year.
There you go, Fernando.
So, we got a lot of exciting things. Thank you, guys, for your time. Hopefully, I was able to provide you with a healthy amount of information about the successes we've had and the work we're doing moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. We appreciate your time.
If I could maybe just check if there's any other council questions for Mr. Madroni?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate your time and the information.
Happy to be here. Thank you, guys.
Is it, is this your first time doing the presentation?
It is.
Because I know at our meeting this past week, Marissa Krieger, the-
Yes, she's the director.
I'm getting the whole staff engaged in going out, no matter what your role was or what position you hold, to get engaged with all the cities and go out and do presentations. We'll tell her you did very well.
Oh, that means a lot coming from you. And I didn't introduce my colleague, Alcira, who's here for emotional support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Good night.
All right. Great. Next, we'll move on to our consent calendar item. All consent calendars may be approved in a single motion unless anyone wishes to pull an item for discussion.
Motion to approve consent calendar, second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no objections. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Public, next we move on to our public hearing. We have none. We have unfinished business. We have none. New business, first item is fiscal year 2022, 2023, fourth quarter preliminary financial review, treasurer's report, revenue expenditure, and capital improvement project summary. I will, Mr., our city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council. Before you tonight is our fourth quarter, essentially our year-end for fiscal year 2223. We're in the midst of the audit right now. We'll be going through that process with our auditors, but this is our admin services and city treasurers and staff's, you know, year-end report preliminarily, unaudited, but we present this to you so you understand the financial condition of the city right now. And in Zoom land right now is our admin services director and city treasurer, Susan Pagaras, who is in COVID quarantine at the moment, but she'll be going over the presentation. Susan, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Great. So-
Hey, are you getting the presentation?
She's, presentation's coming up. Can you see it, Susan?
I don't. There it is. So, good evening, Mayor, council members. As city manager mentioned, this is the fourth quarter of our preliminary financial review for fiscal year 2223. Next slide. Next slide, okay. Tonight, or one slide before that, we're recommending that the city council receive the fiscal year reports, and then also approve and authorize the, authorize staff to revise the revenue expenditure budgets for fiscal year 2223. Next slide, please. So, tonight, just as a brief overview, a really summarized analysis, we'll go over revenues and expenditures, the general fund balance, brief conclusion and brief outlook. So, it'll be a quick presentation tonight. Next slide. So, in quick summary, the general fund fiscal year 2223 will have an estimated surplus of over $2.8 million. Next slide. And the major factors for this surplus are basically our revenues have really gone above our budgeted or what we forecasted for 2223. You can see here, the community development activities are well over half a million dollars in excess. Our court fines, again, are surpassing our expectations. The franchise fees has also increased because mainly of our collections and agreement with Athens. And then, of course, as you well know, the interest rates have really risen, especially for Laid, that we are asking for, or that we are over $402,000 in what was expected. And then, of course, property tax and sales tax continue to grow for us. Next slide. On the expenditure side, that also helped because we budgeted for what we expected to spend. However, there are areas that we underspent, like our one-time CIP projects, for example, the pavement management plan that we originally budgeted at $774,000. We were, we only charged $714,000 to the general fund. And we also have some one-time budgets that we're carrying over into this new fiscal year 2224, which is mainly the, I believe, the ordinances for community development and, I believe, part of their housing element project. We also have, we were under budget for parks and recreation programs. As you know, 2224 is the first year we're fully budgeting for a 100% programming for parks. So, in 2223, we were just slightly lower, underspent at $160,000. And then, on top of that, also our salaries and benefits. We do have savings as, again, part-time parks and rec budget is lower, or expenditures are lower than budgeted. And then, we also have some vacancies that we didn't fill in 2223, such as the part-time parking enforcement officers, and also there's a part-time parks maintenance worker that we didn't hire in 2223. Next slide, please. So, what we're proposing as far as budget amendments is for revenues in the general fund, we're asking for over $1.76 million to get our budgets up to our actuals. For the expenditure side, since we are under budget, there is no request to make any amendments to expenditures. So, with all this, our estimated net operating surplus without the one-time expenditures, we're looking at over $2.9 million. However, when we subtract all the projects, one-time projects that we spent, our estimated surplus for general fund is $2.8 million. And this brings us an all-time high general fund balance of $26,551,000 for the city. Next slide, please. So, this one is just a brief, small request for the non-general fund overview. The revenues are also higher in 2223, and it's mainly attributable to those funds who are allocated from the sales tax, revenues that the county collects. So, you can see Measure M, Measure R, or Proposition A and C, they're all higher than what was expected in 2223. Next slide, please. And expenditures, there is just some, about $172,000 budget amendment request, mainly because there were higher costs in services, and also we've had certain maintenance repairs we had to make. And then, also, we are asking for the budgeting of the local roads and streets program that we did not set up a budget for. Next slide, please. And then, again, briefly, here's the general fund revenue budget amendments being requested. You can see that court fines, franchise fees, interest income, fine check fees, property tax allocation, sales tax allocation are the major revenues that we're requesting budget amendments for. Next slide, please. And this is just a pie chart showing us the breakdown of our estimated revenues of over $19,251,000. You can see that a majority, that almost 44%, are coming from taxes, which includes property tax, sales tax, franchise fees and that. And then, the other piece of the bigger pie or slice is our intergovernmental, which is our in-lu vehicle license fees, which is basically from, again, our property tax revenues. And that's almost 30% of our total revenues. Next slide, please. This is the expenditures, just to give you a picture, that it's pretty much fairly divided, except, you know, public safety is a little over 34%, but everything else is pretty much, you know, we've got 22.9%, 14%, 16%. So, pretty much the sliced almost evenly between the different functions. Next slide. So, in summary, our fund balance for the general fund, when we're looking at our operating revenues, operating expenditures, all our one-time revenues and expenditures, we're looking at, again, as I mentioned earlier, a total fund balance of $26,551,000, almost $552,000 of this, which is about $11,800 of unassigned funds. Next slide, please. So, in conclusion, again, we have a surplus. This is one of the better years, best year for us, best year for us. And we have, again, our actual revenues are over budget. Our actual expenditures are actually under budget, causing us to have that $2.8 million surplus. Next slide, please. So, our outlook, our major revenues are at the highest level ever that the city has experienced. I will come back to you at mid-year to make adjustments to revenues in the fiscal year 2224, to, such as court fines, franchise fees, the interest income, and sales taxes. We haven't, we didn't really take into account the actual revenues we received in 2223. And then, as far as the expenditures for the general fund, we pretty much are up to date on that one. So, the expenditure budgets were increased accordingly. However, we'll continue to monitor the costs throughout the fiscal year. So, lastly, again, recommended actions is for city council to receive the 2223 fourth quarter financial review and related reports, and approve and authorize staff to revise the revenue and expenditure budgets for fiscal year 2223. And if you have any questions, you can take it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Perigis. So, we'll go with, we'll see if council has any questions, starting with Councilmember Viscara?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Hi, Susan. Hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Just one question. How, how long do you think the interest rates will, you know, stay at what they are now? I don't know how much more they'll increase, but do you think throughout the next year?
From what I've been reading, inflation is still not as low as the feds would like it to be. So, I see the interest rates continuing to be at, it's not necessarily higher level, but possibly maintaining or slightly dip below what it is now. But I don't believe it'll fall back into like the 0.2% that we used to get from Laid, or 0.69% that we were getting last fiscal year in June 30th, 2022, as the staff report mentioned. As of June 30th, 2023, our interest rate from Laid is a little over 3%. So, that's a big jump for us, which caused our interest income to really increase.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Just, just one general question for you, Director Perigis. Knowing the information we know now, does this in any way change our outlook for our current fiscal year budget? I know it's, we've gone through that discussion at length. But is, is there anything from like a big-picture standpoint that jumps out from the data for the fourth quarter financial that would alter or change any of the budget discussions that we've had before?
Yes. So, in 2224, our revenues were not adjusted accordingly to the end of fiscal year 2223. As you know, our budget started in February, February, March, and then our final revenues don't come in really till July and August. So, it was difficult to project what our revenues would be in 2224. I would say that we will be in a good position for 2224. Of course, pending all the, if there are any additional costs in the services or utilities, you know, barring that in mind. But, as I mentioned, court fines, our franchise fees will be adjusted, interest income certainly will be adjusted, as it was based on the 0.69% that we had in June 30th, 2022. So, that certainly will change and increase our surplus in 2224.
All right, thank you. And I know we will, that's part of the process we did for budget adjustments either mid-year or at other points. So, thank you for the answer. Okay, if there's no other questions from council, I will open the public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment. Final council comments, Councilmember Viscara?
Still don't have it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Sternquist? Mayor Protem Chavez?
No, thank you.
All right, I'll just say quickly, thank you, Director Perigis, and city manager Cook and staff for doing a lot of the, I mean, we, we've done a lot of things from both a policy and staff standpoint to really get the yields that we are seeing in this fourth quarter financial report. Surplus, I mean, you can kind of look at it different ways. You could say, well, we're managing it in a fiscally responsible manner. Some would say, well, what are you going to do with this surplus? But I will say that as a council, we do have a number of items coming up in future meetings related to reinvestments in our community, not limited to park renovations, but also looking at our Lastuna's downtown corridor, and, you know, to list one more thing, the old Chamber of Commerce property. So, there is a number of items that we can take action on, and I think this, this financial report kind of sets the stage for some of that discussion. So, I just want to note that this, this kind of gives us better flexibility in how we want to make decisions on how to reinvest that back into the city. So, I just want to thank staff for doing a great job. And with that, may we have a council motion for this item?
I'll make a motion to receive the fiscal year 2223 fourth quarter financial review and related reports, and approve and authorize staff to revise revenue and expenditure budgets for fiscal year 2223. for fiscal year 22-23.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. If there's no objections, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Next, we move on to item 10B, the first amendment to the Internet Services Agreement with Spectrum Enterprise for increased bandwidth of Internet connection for City Hall and Ethernet private line to Live Oak Park and the city yard. City Manager Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council. This item was before you at your last meeting, and we clarified some issues with Charter. Charter is the preferred vendor because of the fact that they actually do have the infrastructure in place. There is no additional excavation of the public right-of-way or even the wiring at City Hall that we need to do. Part of the reason we need to do this is because of the fact that things like the, the camera system that you, public safety camera system that you've employed, some of the other online activities that we've been having that previously in person are taking up an extraordinary amount of bandwidth between all of our facilities, including cameras at our, at our city yard as well, too. So this is just a step in ensuring that we have enough bandwidth throughout the entire system and, most importantly, also for the individuals who utilize some of our online services as well, customers who are not necessarily coming in the city hall but utilizing many of the online systems we have today. So if you have any questions, Susan and I are here.
Okay. Any council questions?
How much are we increasing it by?
We're increasing the amount a little substantially in terms of the total amount. Susan?
It's, we're using it five times our current bandwidth.
It's five times our current, it's five times our current bandwidth that we have now.
And is there still room to even go higher than that?
Yes. However, the cost will also escalate.
Sure. No, I understand that. But if we need it in the future, that would be something we could look into.
Yeah. Susan, in consultation with our IT consultant, Brea IT thinks this is kind of the, the sweet spot for right now with enough, with maybe a little bit of give to be able to provide what we need for both our, for all of our applications.
And the Internet services that we have with Spectrum, I think I asked you before, it's a separate branch than the cable TV and other issues that they've been dealing with, correct? Or is it all?
I'd have to ask Susan that question.
It's a different service, I guess, division, you know?
There's no, you mentioned Charter. There's no such thing as Charter anymore.
I keep saying Charter. I keep saying Charter.
Yeah, but it's not called Spectrum.
Shows how old I am.
Yeah, I know.
It's what?
It's not Charter, sir. It's Spectrum.
It used to be Charter, but now it's Spectrum.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
They each have a different type of service.
Right. Okay.
Councilmember Viscara, did you have a question?
Just a quick, have we had, do we have or have we had cameras at the city yard?
No, we just recently installed them. So that's some of the, the digital cameras that we're having, the Flock camera system, the, the cameras at the yard are taking up a significant amount of bandwidth as well. So that's part of the reason why we need this additional bandwidth and capacity.
Makes sense.
Oh, so the, the Flock cameras are operated under the, the city bandwidth?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I see. So the reason I, what I'm thinking right now is, not that we would do it, but if there was ever any potential expansion of either Flock or security systems at city facilities?
Right. That's the biggest, that's the biggest one.
That would all tie back into the bandwidth. Okay.
Well, you know, I'm just curious, Brian, with what recently happened in Las Vegas with all the MGM properties, I mean, should we take a look, a deeper dive and look into with Brea IT if we're maximizing everything we need to do to, you know, train our employees and to, you know, consistently bring that to the forefront? Because evidently, from what I've heard, is that this started basically from a phone call with an employee who just was answering normal questions, they thought, so.
It's a great question, Councilmember Sternquist. And Susan is actually, she mentioned to me recently that she's going to be doing some things as well. Some of it is almost like testing our employees. We, there have been other agencies around us in the last three, few months, and, and we've been noticed of some, you know, attempts as well. So we, our, our system has been tested essentially, and to the best of our knowledge, right now, we have, we have not received a ransomware attack or anything like that. But that doesn't, that, that doesn't hold us back from, as you're, as you're pointing out, Councilmember Sternquist, to make sure that we are resilient and what we're doing as well. So we will be continuing to do that. We're going to be sending out a few surprises as well internally to make sure that our team knows, make sure, and we, we send, we educate our employees, but there's things you can do to kind of test the resiliency of your system, and we'll be, we'll be, we'll be approaching that as well.
You know, I recall some time ago at a JPIA conference, and one of the speakers that spoke about Internet safety and other stuff, but said, you should treat everything that you get as fraud. Every text message you get, you should question, is this fraud or not? Because so many of the texts that we get seem so real.
And they're getting more and more sophisticated.
Yes.
More and more. I mean, things that look legit to, I've reviewed things for clients, they looked legit to me as an attorney, but they aren't. So can you imagine somebody who gets these and really has not, never seen it before, and all of a sudden, they, they fall for it? It looks, it looks real.
Additionally, just, I may have mentioned this at a meeting after the, our most recent JPIA conference, we do, as part of, part of our layers of coverage that we have, one of those, one of those coverage, insurance coverage levels is for cybercrime. But that includes a, a resource if the unfortunate happens and we do have a cyberattack that disables our online services. We actually have a support team, expert support team, even outside of Brea IT. We would do it in conjunction, we would work with Brea IT, but it is, it's with Kroll. It's one of the largest cybercrime entities in the, in the world. And we actually, we would, there's a 24-hour 81800 hotline that we can call and say, this has happened, and what do we do? And it's, it's a, it's a difficult and delicate process to work through a cybercrime attack. Some of our sister agencies of the San Gabriel Valley and elsewhere have been hit with cybercrime events, and so we, we have that service through JPIA, which is fantastic.
But that would be once that happened, right?
That would be once the event actually occurred.
You know, the reason I thought about this also, not just with the MGM incident, but Foothill Transit uses a particular company that provides all the security. My understanding for the years that I've known we've had Brea IT was that they would fix computer glitches and things like, of that nature, that they weren't really a security technology company.
They're not a security technology company per se, but they do provide us with, with a, a level of that service. Not the same as some outside cyber companies, but always something we can look at, always something we can try to improve. It's something we have to be, it's the reality of what every agency has to deal with, and I know Susan's on top of it, and anything we can do to improve will be doing that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, all really good, good questions and points. And I guess since we're, we're talking about that, I mean, even our staff report acknowledges that more and more of our systems are moving to cloud-based servers, and so you're not, it's not so much about hacking into or sabotaging like a physical server. Now things are in the cloud, so you're dealing with a different kind of cybersecurity. That's inherently, yeah, I mean, it's a double-edged sword, so to speak, right? You, you have the convenience of things being in the cloud, but it also comes at a cost of certain cybersecurity weaknesses, but.
It's not necessarily safe if it's in the cloud?
I, I don't know enough to be, to really say that conclusively, but I think the only example I can give is, you know, you don't hear too much about cryptocurrencies anymore. There's these things called wallets, and everyone that I know who dabbles in that always prefers the physical wallet, which is literally a USB device that you hold in your hand. They prefer that over your sort of commercially available cloud-based system. So again, that's just, you know, one sliver of this broad spectrum of, of cybersecurity issues. So I, I trust that, you know, Susan and staff and our partners in Brea IT have our best, best interests in mind. And, and I do concur that it is worthwhile to maybe see what is being offered out there, but it has to kind of fit the needs of our city, because things obviously scale differently for cities of different sizes with different levels of data and platforms and so on and so forth. And so we kind of went into a discussion without opening the public comment, so I will open up the public comment and see if anyone wants to address the city council at this time.
No, great.
All right. I will close the public comment. Any final thoughts from council?
Yeah, I just had one.
Sure.
I was just thinking about what you were saying, that you're in essence going to be testing the staff. For lack of a better word, testing them. Aren't we, because we're not doing that every day and all the time, a bigger threat than they are?
Maybe there'll be a little surprise coming for the council as well in that process.
No, you should send us to them.
Well, we, we, it's all the, I'm teasing, but it's all the users, which includes, the users include all of you as well.
Okay. Good to know.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. May we have a motion for this item?
Mayor Mann, I would make a motion that we approve the agreement to increase the city's bandwidth for faster Internet connectivity for city facilities.
Second.
And if I may?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We approve the additional cost and then authorize city manager to execute the agreement with Spectrum Enterprises.
Okay.
I'm a second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for those, those two recommendations. There's no objections. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. All right. Next, we have an update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council. Just two things. Again, thank you to staff, thank you to World Journal for this past weekend. Great event, and I appreciate their collaboration and their professionalism is, is one of the key things. We do not have to worry about anything from a logistical standpoint with our partners at World Journal, so thank you to them. Coming up, usually we have what would be the traditional Fall Festival and Car Show, but this year we will be having a slight change where we will actually be celebrating the town's centennial. So we will have a centennial celebration, a Fall Festival, and the Car Show, all in one, on Saturday, September 30th, here at Temple City Park. We will have a parade start, and since we unfortunately missed our Camellia Festival Parade this year, we will be having a centennial parade, going along the same route as you think is we do when we do Lights on Temple City. So a little bit smaller scale, but from Cloverly to Temple City Park. Our opening ceremony will start at 10:00 a.m., and then from 10:00 to 6:00, we will have a classic car show, the normal Fall Festival performances by the Temple City Unified School District students, but this year with a specific key, or sorry, historical components. The Historical Society will have an information booth. Homestead Museum will actually have an informational booth as well. Homestead is also going to be providing some historical talks throughout the day about the history of Temple City, about the history of the Workman Temple family, about Walter P. Temple himself, some of the early history of the, of Temple City. And throughout, you'll see, throughout the park and in, in the council chambers as well, you'll see a lot of photo era, era, 1920 era photos and other artifacts throughout the park and in the chambers to celebrate the city's history. On top of that, too, we're going to make it a fun and festive event, and we'll have a kid's zone with a castle bouncer, a castle bouncer, a ball pit, silhouette artists, balloon artists, entertainment zone with a, a small obstacle course, a hangman obstacle course, I'm not sure what that is exactly, rock climbing, and we will have a, a kind of historic trackless train that's actually going to be, we're actually going to block off Las Tunas from Golden West to Kaufman. So you're going to see a kind of a vintage type of era train for the kids to go, to go around. So it'll be a really fun event. A lot of giveaways. You're going to start to see some of the branding of the centennial up and down Las Tunas. You'll see some of the branding that's happening right now. We, we've had a lot of questions asking if we have additional copies of Connect. We are kind of running out. We only printed so many, so we'll have a few.
I have four of them, and I'm not doing anything with.
Want, if you can give me three, I'll, I'll, we'll take them.
I ended up with four, see, every time I turned around, somebody was handing me one.
So thank, we want to thank, really want to thank the Temple City Historical Society, the Homestead Museum, the two partners who are really truly helping us out with this event to make this a fun, festive, and recognize the historic nature of, of this time. So we appreciate them.
Will Adam be back by then?
Adam is actually back. So he's here, and he's, there are some final touches we're doing, the team is doing this week as well. So we are looking forward to a fun and exciting centennial Fall Festival. Thank you, sir.
Great. No, thank you. Next, we have an update from our city attorney. I believe he is dialed in. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No substantive update tonight, although I can say I'll be heading to the League of California Cities meetings tomorrow, their annual conference in Sacramento. So the next three or four meetings, I should have some good things to tell you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Next, we move on to ad hoc or standing committee meeting updates. Do we have any reports? Nothing for ad hoc or standing committees? All right. Then we go to items separate from the regular agenda. Why don't we start with Councilmember Viscara?
Well, I think this weekend went over well. Everything seemed well-coordinated and even more organized at last. So congratulations to Brian, staff, and, and World Journal and everybody else that was involved. Other than that, that's, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
It was just a fun event. I was only able to come one day, but the weather cooperated, and it was actually nice to be outside after so many days of hot weather. The food was delicious. I think there was just a wide variety, and I am just thank you to everyone involved, and World Journal did a really good job.
Thank you. Mayor Protan Chavez?
I echo my little council members. It was a good event, and I think everybody had a great time and didn't hear any, any negativity about anything, no incidences, I take it, Brian? Now, were the sheriffs there to patrol, or were they just sitting in their booth the whole time? I mean.
There was a combination of both.
Oh, okay. All right. I just wasn't sure what, what.
Deputy Bowie was, he had, he checked out, he checked out every single, every single food booth. I promise. I saw him.
Good. No, it was, it was a good event. Thank you, staff. I know that a lot of hard work went into that, and it looks like it paid off. Good job.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
You're good?
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and I just want to say, well done to everyone who was involved in putting together the High Autumn Festival. I can't say enough about their professionalism, and I know we've worked with them a number of times already, so it gets easier, right? Hopefully. And again, I think they're, they, they really know how to put an event together, so that, that's what, that's something that I was really proud of everyone doing. The turnout was great, and I think like Councilmember Sternquist said, the weather was a big factor. The turnout was great, and I think like Councilmember Sternquist said, the weather was a big factor. I know in previous Mid-Autumn Festivals, it was right around that time where it was still pretty warm, and so even talking to the president of World Journal, Catherine Yu, she mentioned that the, right when it opened, at around 2:00, there was already a significant crowd. Normally around that time, if you're dealing with 9,500 degree heat, no one's going to show up until the sun starts coming down. So that was great. And I also attended, they had a presentation later on Saturday evening, so I just want to also thank our Congress member Judy Chu for attending, as well as our state assembly member Mike Fong, who came later that evening for part of that presentation with World Journal. And I want to thank all of council for being there during the opening ceremony, I think that shows great solidarity and unity, and I know our friends over at World Journal greatly appreciate it. And then, of course, I'm incredibly excited about the centennial celebration that we have, as City Manager Cook alluded to. I can't say enough about how much work our staff has done in terms of thinking through so many different ideas and putting all the details together. I know Mayor Protem and I are on the ad hoc, so we are privy to a lot of the details and the behind the scenes of what they've done, and, yeah, we can't say enough about that. So that's definitely exciting. Also, want to thank the Historical Society for so much of their input and collaboration with us, as well as the school district for being great partners in that. As many of us know, the Fall Festival traditionally has always been a school district-centered event, and so I think it's really appropriate that we take something special like the 100 Year Celebration and kind of combine all these things together, because that's truly the, if there is one time to do that, it's, this is it. This is the time to really come together and celebrate together. I'm also really glad that we're bringing, we're having a parade. As many of you know, the Camellia Festival didn't get to have their parade earlier this year due to weather, and so knock on wood, hopefully, weather again cooperates in the same way that it did for our Mid-Autumn Festival, and that we can have a great, fantastic event on Saturday.
I think green or shine, we should just do that parade with umbrellas.
Oh, I agree, yeah. If it comes down to it, it's going to happen. Okay, and just a reminder for anyone who is interested and tuned in right now, we do have a Neighborhood Watch meeting this Thursday, I believe.
Yes.
At 5:30 at Bethlehem Lutheran Church?
Yes.
Okay, and that is out on Halifax.
Halifax and Frere.
It's close to.
Here around in the corner.
You can walk there.
Yeah, I could, but I probably won't.
So please, please definitely check it out if you haven't been to one or are interested in knowing what's going on from the public safety side of the city. We have a wonderful team from the public safety side and from the city side, as well as our special assignment deputies to do a fantastic job with that presentation.
Mayor Mann, if you don't mind, I talked to Brian earlier in the week about this, and it seems that reading our reports that we get from the sheriff, there've been an increasing amount of domestic violence incidents in the city, and I'm wondering if maybe, I don't know who would address this, maybe Brian Irazumi, or maybe our sheriffs, maybe adding a component to the Neighborhood Watch regarding that issue, whether it fits into that. I mean, it's all public safety, I mean, you know, I don't see too much of difference between that and maybe active shooter situations, which we hope never occur, but it just seems that lately, and for whatever reason, I'm sure we'll talk about this at the next sheriff meeting, it's that there have been an increase, it seems like, in those type of crimes, which, you know, whether there's a reason for that or not, so just throw that out there, and I know we talked about it, and maybe we can pass it on to Brian Irazumi or someone else who wants to take a look at it, or maybe for next year.
Sure.
Because I know we like to keep things updated for the Neighborhood Watch, and maybe that'd be something that we could add to the mix.
Well, that's a great idea, yeah, exactly. Every year, we talk about and discuss some of the relevant topics for the upcoming year's meetings, and we get a lot of great input from the community as well at those meetings. Okay, so next, we go on to additional public comments. Is anyone here would like to address the city council? Thank you for staying with us this entire evening, appreciate it. All right, if there's no more comments, I will close that part of the public comments. Before we adjourn, I would like to say two things. First, I want to say that our prayers are with Mr. Jerry Janbazian and his wife, Pat. We understand they're going through some challenges right now. Usually Jerry's a mainstay at our meetings and events, so our prayers are certainly with the Janbazian family. Secondly, I do want to also say, there was a terrible tragedy over this weekend that happened with our Los Angeles County Sheriff's family. Many of you may have heard that we lost Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer on Saturday evening, just outside of the Palmdale Station. And so it is a, there's been a lot of developments since then, which I won't go into the details, but I've said this in the past, and I know council shares the sentiment, that our law enforcement officers really put their lives on the line, like, day after day, literally put their lives on the line. You never know what can happen. It's a tragic, tragic death, a tragic loss. You know, when we lose a member of our family, we all hurt, we're all mourning. As a city, we did issue a statement to support our fellow members of the Ella County Sheriff's Department as they go through this time of mourning. I do want to say, extend a special word of appreciation for our special assignment team. I know Deputy Francis Bowie is here with us tonight, but truly, you all are such an integral part of our community, and we just cannot fully understand the heartbreak that you are experiencing through this loss, but know that we are with you. We have your back, we support you, and it couldn't be said enough. So with that, I do want to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer. Good night.